Ms. Blackshear, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 22nd?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes from June 22nd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any communications or petitions?
I have been distributed, Your Honor.
Okay, do we have any additions or deletions or comments to the calendar?
Yes, Your Honor. First, I would like to request the addition of informal resolution number 997-22, establishing the city commission's intention not to prioritize the enforcement of state laws that criminalize abortion. And second, I would like to request that calendar item B1 and calendar item number 7 be voted on separately.
Okay, thank you.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, Ms. Dixing, do you have any additions or deletions or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this evening's calendar. I do have a couple of items I would like to highlight. First being item number five, which is a sponsorship agreement with Marion's Piazza for the 2022 Independence Day celebration. This is Roger Glass, the owner of Marion's Piazza. It is ninth year in supporting our fireworks celebration. So we are forever grateful for Mr. Glass to support our celebration, which of course is so important to our community and to our families to come down and enjoy a nice July 3rd event. So I want to just give Roger Glass a big shout out for his continued support of our community with his contribution. Item number seven, which is the contribution agreement for the Joint Office of Citizen Complaints. Wanted to just provide a few comments with regards to this calendar item. It is a $25,000 contract. As we have previously discussed, our 2022 budget process involves several reductions to contributions and/or donations. The Ombudsman's Office was created in 1971 and provides critical service to Dayton residents. No one is disputing their value to our community. However, in 1983, the Human Services Levy was established to provide a dedicated funding stream to ensure critical human services addressing many areas such as domestic violence, child abuse, elder assistance, homelessness, alcohol, drug, and mental services, job and family services, to be provided throughout Montgomery County. The levy generates $127 million to support these kinds of services throughout the city of Dayton. And in many of these situations, the city of Dayton is by far the largest beneficiary of these important levy dollars, which is obviously why you all support it so vigorously every year or every time it comes up for renewal. Since the early 2000s, the foreclosure crisis and significant population decline from a peak of 260,000 people to 139,000 people has created a significant strain on city revenues. If we are to drive quality of life up throughout our neighborhoods, we must target our limited resources wisely and address priorities such as demolition, dangerous driving, gun violence reduction, business development support that grow job opportunities for our residents and income tax to support citywide services delivery, our EMT and fire response, our road repaving, and our housing development. Our 20, just as a point of order, our $25,000 reduction to the Ombudsman's Office represents a 4% reduction to the Ombudsman's total revenue sources. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of background there so that folks had an understanding as to why the cut, what the impact truly is, and what we are trying to do with our limited resources.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Blackshear, are there any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
Yes, Your Honor, there are two citizens who have registered to speak on calendar items. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on a red light, green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, I ask everyone to be respectful by reframing from any utterance, gesture, or conversation that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. A call to the podium, Joseph Abrams. Your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Abrams, 117 Park Drive, 45410.
You may begin.
I'd like to talk today about the commission's informal resolution proposal 997-22, which, as was stated earlier, is a plan to de-prioritize prosecution of abortion-related crimes since Roe has been overturned. First of all, I just want to say I really, really appreciated having seen Mayor Mims' comments about what happened on Friday with the Supreme Court and Ms. Turner Sloss's comments. They both meant a whole lot. I'm really curious, bothered why the rest of the commission hasn't said anything yet. Mr. Fairchild, I understand you're really busy on some really important projects. Mr. Shaw, I have no idea. Mr. Joseph, I have a pretty good idea based on your vote in 2019 when you added yourself as pro-life in front of this commission. But beyond that, I think this resolution's a little weak. De-prioritize, I wish that you could give it at least the same seriousness that you gave marijuana and actually decriminalize it in the city. Give police specific instructions to, you let people have reproductive access, work with area hospitals as the county seat, work with the prosecutor, work with the county, and let's make this actually a safe haven for reproductive rights. I think that's what should happen. The way it's worded now, I feel like it's just something that looks nice since it's a big national issue facing Democrats, which we all are here as far as you five and myself and you as well. But, and it gives Mr. Joseph an easy out to vote for someone that's not really that big a deal so he doesn't have to look bad because he's facing reelection next year. Again, I don't know Mr. Shaw's position, Mr. Joseph, to call yourself pro-life. All of us educated adults, someone especially with your background, would have absolutely no reason to not know that that is a position deeply tied to the white supremacy movement in the United States, tied directly to the failure to keep schools segregated. It was a straight segue. It's still the same movement. People said this was a big win for white lives in Trump circles this weekend. I know you're coming from a different position of your religious beliefs, but again, if we base decisions on religious beliefs instead of science, we end up with all this anti-masking, anti-vaxing. That's not really what we want, right? We want community safety, public safety, civil rights versus opinions and feelings. And quite honestly, the other reason is if you're a very serious Christian, sir, how come the majority of your career here has been criminalizing poverty and robbing our schools by getting tax breaks to corporations? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Marty Garrus. Name and address for the record, please.
Marty Garrus, 208 Rowe Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, 45406.
You may begin.
Commissioners, thank you for introducing the legislation today. I'm Marty Garrus. I'm the Dayton Clerk of Court, and previously I was an Assistant City Attorney for the city of Dayton. I believe most rational people can agree that enforcing criminal law is targeted at doctors performing abortions and women is wrong. No one should be thrown into jail for exercising a fundamental right. Do you have my support in this legislation? This is a great first step. I fundamentally disagree with the decision to overturn Roe v. Wade. The fundamental right to privacy, which includes the right to have an abortion, must be protected. The Supreme Court's decision in Dobbs has thrown this country into a legal black hole with doctors, women, health organizations, and legal experts scrambling in uncertainty. Yesterday, in the Dayton Daily News, there was an article concerning a woman with cancer. Now she is required to drive to Indiana to have an abortion, just so she could receive life-saving chemotherapy. This is a medical procedure that she could have had performed in Kettering on Friday. We do not know how long that will remain an option. This decision has caused tears, pain, and confusion for residents and employees. Further, it endangers people's lives. Our people need our help. As leaders, I hope that we can find a way to go forward and to ensure that our employees and residents have access to abortion services, just as they did prior to this decision. As an attorney and employer, I recognize that this will be complicated and difficult to achieve as the legal ramifications are still not known. But by working together, I believe that we can ensure that that becomes a reality. I would ask that you all consider ways in which we can ensure that this fundamental right is not stripped away from our residents and employees by Columbus or by unelected judges in Washington. I'm already considering ways in which I can ensure that that happens, and I look forward to working with all you to do the same. So let's get to work. Thank you for introducing again, and it's good to be back.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day.
Welcome back. Thank you for being here.
That is all on challenge, Your Honor. Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any comments on the city manager recommendations?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a few comments. One in particular, I would like to raise a concern, and I believe Ms. Dixing has already mentioned that calendar item B1 will be voted on separately. With this recommendation, please note that this is no reflection of my support for the Civil Service Board or for city employees. However, I cannot in good conscience vote nor support the vendor that has been awarded this particular purchase order, and that is Premier Health, given the fact that they have neglected the services and the healthcare options for Northwest Dayton residents. I also like to make a comment in regards to the, well, I think that's all I have for the calendar at this time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fairchild.
No comments, Senator.
Okay, Shaw?
Yeah, well, I want to thank you. I think this is the appropriate time for the, about the informal resolution.
Yes.
I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting this informal resolution. You know, this decision, this Supreme Court decision was just awful for our community. It victimizes patients. It victimizes poor and underserved communities, and it victimizes women, and especially women of color, that are just looking to maintain, to hold on. And sometimes pregnancy is very contradictory to that. Not only that, but the severe health effects associated with pregnancy. I will tell you this story. My wife almost died giving birth to our child. So bringing pregnancy to full term is not just something that everybody does. It happens and no consequences. It can be very dangerous and therefore very frightening. So I applaud you all. I want to thank all of you for agreeing to bring this legislation forward and this resolution forward. And this is not a panacea for how we push back on the state. This is a first step. And if we can explore other ways to strengthen this, then we're going to do just that. So thanks again, and I just wanted to make sure that that was said.
Okay.
On the, I do need to have a comment because I think the Ombudsman's legislation is also associated with this. It's an appropriate time to comment on that as well, right? I appreciate the city manager for her comments and to kind of reiterate what we've talked about for a very long time now. This is going on, been going on for some time. The city has very limited resources, and we have to make tough decisions about how we spend them. There are many worthy causes that we are not able to fund at the level that they need or deserve. When we're making these choices, we have to fund the organizations that align best with our priorities and the services that we provide as a city. While the Ombudsman's Office provides invaluable services to residents all over this county, they primarily function as a social service agency. The city does not provide social services. Others do in this community. So the broader mission of the Ombudsman's Office does not fit neatly into the services the city is best at providing. I'm on their board, and I understand fully the impact that they have for our community. They're a great organization. But still, we believe their mission is important, and they need to be made whole. And given that, I've worked behind the scenes since this issue was raised well over a year ago to find resources to make sure that Ombudsman's Office did not lose any funding. Instead, instead of grandstanding to score political points, I've worked quietly to secure funding from Montgomery County to make up for what the city can no longer provide. This is real leadership, actually working to solve problems and not focusing on trying to sow division for political points. We have big problems facing our city, many of which my colleagues mention regularly. When we waste our time and our staff's time on silly political fights, that blunts our ability to actually face these challenges. And if we really want to address the state of our neighborhoods to help prepare our residents for jobs and support the creation of new businesses, we really have to be firing on all cylinders. We can disagree, we can push each other. We don't have to always be on the same page, but our time must be spent on working toward the common good. And it cannot be about gotcha moments and grandstanding. We waste time and resources that could be spent on addressing the problems that we were elected to address. Our residents don't care about who made the best point on the dais. They care about whether or not we are effectively making Dayton a better place to live. And that's what I'm committed to doing, and I hope that all of my colleagues are willing to do that work as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Shaw, for your leadership in that area. I'd like to also address the six-weeks law that suddenly has come into force, the six-week abortion ban law. It's severe government overreach. It'll put our Dayton residents' health in jeopardy, and worse, just like so many things do in Dayton, it's going to have a disproportionately huge impact on our disadvantaged population. And it would be irresponsible for us to commit city resources toward enforcing a flawed policy like this, extremely flawed policy. So I'll be glad to join with my colleagues in supporting this de-prioritization resolution today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you much. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the city manager's recommendations with the exception of calendar item B1 and calendar item 7?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve calendar, city manager's recommendations with the exceptions of item B1 and calendar item 7. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. So it's been properly moved and seconded to take care of that one. We move to my next page so we can have a vote on calendar item B1. So may I have a motion to approve calendar item B1?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve calendar item number B1. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the city manager's recommendation, item number 7?
So moved, Your Honor.
Mayor, I'd like to refer, make a motion to referral for the purpose of increasing the, to the city manager's office for the purpose of increasing the contract from $25,000 to $50,000.
Seconding you, Your Honor.
All right, so it's been properly moved and seconded to, to vote in this area. All in favor say aye.
Mayor, I'd like to moment to.
Discussion?
Yes. Yes, please.
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Yeah, just want to reiterate the points I made two weeks ago, and that was on a day when we had also adjusted the appropriations budget because our income is doing better than we anticipated. And the week before, we had increased the Entrepreneur Center by $50,000. And city manager, you gave some excellent reasons around why we needed to do that. Likewise, on that night, we added an additional $35,000 for a position with the hub and $250,000 for the tank. So this is really not a question about us not having the money. It becomes about our priorities. And Commissioner Shaw, I agree with you, it's about the well-being of our city. And I believe we all want that. Sometimes we have differences in our priorities, and this is just a matter of being a difference in priorities. One of the things that needs to be said is this is not any other organization. It is our organization. We are a third of the bodies that incorporate that organization. It's our organization. We have a responsibility to fund it. It's our responsibility. Secondly, one of the key things about being an ombudsman is the, one of its characteristics is it to be independent. And so our funding helps to ensure that the ombudsman is able to maintain that level of independence. And, you know, lastly, I don't see this as a social service. Social services are the giving of food, housing, mental health services. The $27 million that the Human Services Levy is woefully short of the needs in our community, and this service is to ensure that citizens get all of the services they have, particularly when they come up against bureaucratic structures that they can't fight alone. For example, if someone had trouble accessing the Entrepreneur Center, which doesn't fall in social services at all, one of their recourse would be to the ombudsman. I encourage you to join us in recommending or referring this to the city manager.
Okay.
I just want to echo, I think, thank you very much. I really appreciate your explanation. And again, I just want to echo Commissioner Fairchild's comments. It's important that we support the Ombudsman's Office for a number of reasons. We have seen firsthand the housing crisis that we're dealing with. If you look at the report and the summary that was submitted by Ms. Willborn last week, a number of city of Dayton residents have been turning to the Ombudsman's Office in search of housing. Many of our residents that are part of the voucher program, the Section 8 GDPR voucher program, over 300 families are without housing. They cannot locate any housing within the city of Dayton or beyond, and with that is causing them to lose their housing vouchers, which is forcing them into homelessness. So we have to do something, and so how do we support our residents? By making sure that we are supporting the agency and the organization to maintain its independency, and that's increasing the funding for the Ombudsman's Office. And I would just urge my colleagues to really sincerely think about this, think about the times that we're in. We're dealing with a lot right now, and we cannot let this slip past us. This is critical. And so I just, again, urge you all to really consider this. Thank you.
I just, if I have a question for Commissioner Shaw. Just want to clarify that we're going to give them, as the plan is currently, $25,000 in the Ombudsman. And you, if I understood you correctly, you said you'd arranged with Montgomery County to give them the other $25,000 that we would have given under Commissioner's plan.
That's correct.
Commissioner, you're not, you're not satisfied that we've been made good that way?
No, I've talked with the county commissioners, and, you know, I've talked to them, and they said, you know, if we have to, we're not going to let the Ombudsman go. I think it's a poor way to build our relationship with the county by cutting funds from, an organization that is ours, right? You know, initially said, we're not going to put anything into an organization that's ours. That just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I would just say this, you know, it's true. About 55% of the complaints, complainants are from the city of Dayton, and of course they are. We house the majority of poor and disenfranchised folks in this county. However, we are also in the Montgomery County. And the Ombudsman's Office was put together, you're right, by the county, the city of Dayton, and the Dayton Public Schools, a decade and a half almost before the Human Services Levy process started. So it's a different time. We had significantly more people in our community than we do now. You know, it's a different, it's a different timeframe. And, and we have made the Ombudsman's Office whole. And I will tell you that the county commissioners, we, we're on the board together, the mayor and myself on their board, have been having conversations about strengthening the Ombudsman's Office to seek outside funding other than government. And I think that there's a way to do just that, to make it even much stronger than it is right now. But at this point, they've been made whole. They've been made whole exactly the way that they were before this whole process started. And they will continue to do the great work in our community. But even though 55 or 60% of the complainants are from Dayton, the vast majority of the people being complained about are in the county and not in the city of Dayton. So I just think it makes good sense. We've made them whole. We will continue. We've all reached out to them and said that we would be helpful to them in expanding their revenue base, and I commit to doing just that. But this is the right thing to do for our city. It is a human services issue, and the county rightly should step in and fill the gap in terms of that, so.
Mayor, if I could, just as a clarification, there, as a, as a point that goes to the point that Commissioner Shaw made about changing demographics, right? And 50 years ago, we participated, you know, with $50,000, and we had a whole lot more people. Then the caseload, based on the last report of the Ombudsman, there were 37 cases in the city of Dayton. That's 6% of the caseload of the governmental, because there's a lot of other work the Ombudsman does that's funded differently. But of the governmental activity, there were 37 cases in the city of Dayton, well over 550 throughout the rest of Montgomery County. And so to, to the point of rebalancing, you know, Montgomery County is generating 10 times that of what the city of Dayton is generating in case activity. So what I see this as is a reset, trying to put it in a, in a more equitable position because we are putting, we're reducing, we're not eliminating completely, we're reducing our participation and allowing for a reset with regards to the funding structure.
Thank you very much. I think the issue of, just a second.
Yes, sir.
I think the issue in terms of where we've come from the, the onset, Ombudsman's Office, guys, in my peer, previous life, if you will, working with the school system during the time that we set this process up. Also additionally, having served on the Human Services Levy, both as co-chair for the levy itself on several occasions and also on the board itself, there are resources there that the county has agreed that they will take and make sure that this process stays intact. Additionally, at our last meeting, which again, being a member of that particular board, along with the three county commissioners, we all agreed that this process would be sufficient and would take care of all the needs of the Ombudsman. On an additional basis, we're in no way challenging the merits of the Ombudsman's Office. I think those things are, have been justified repeatedly over the last 50 years. So again, the actual issue in terms of what we're trying to do right now is to make sure that the resources that we have are balanced in a way that makes us whole, if you will, and also makes them whole in terms of addressing those issues. So Commissioner Turner Sloss, you have a comment, and then we're going to go ahead and call for the vote.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just want us not to negate the point that we also have to be reminded that the Ombudsman's Office was severely cut. The initial budget was, in fact, $75,000. So the Ombudsman's Office has endured severe cuts. Again, it is our priority and it's our obligation to make sure that we're supporting this organization to maintain its independence. And I also, again, would just challenge what we're looking at in terms of the number of percentage of Dayton residents who are relying on the services of the Ombudsman's Office. And again, I would just urge my colleagues to really reconsider this budget.
Okay, as I mentioned before, being a member of that board, along with the other county commissioners, we have sufficiently addressed the need to take care of the Ombudsman's Office. So at this particular point in time, we have a motion, and we have a second. So is your motion to table, or your motion to?
Refer, refer the contract to the city manager. Refer, refer the contract to the City Manager's Office to increase the contract amount from $25,000 to $50,000.
So we have a motion to that. So roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mims.
No.
Commissioner Joseph.
No.
Shaw.
No.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Turner Sloss.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So then I'll move back to the City Manager's recommendation that's been properly moved and seconded to approve City Manager's recommendation of item seven.
It wasn't seconded yet. I'll have to get it read.
Well, just give me a second.
Your Honor, I move that we approve City Manager's recommendation number seven.
A second, Your Honor.
Okay, now, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve City Manager's recommendation, item number seven. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, legislation, please, Ms. Blackshear.
Excuse me, Your Honor. So we have a five, I mean, a four one vote on the number seven?
No.
All right, just clarifying it for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Second reading, resolution number 6653-22, authorizing the City Manager to accept federal fiscal years 2023 and 2024 Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Project Grants from the United States Department of Transportation for airport improvement projects at the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport and Dayton Wright Brothers Airport on behalf of the City of Dayton in an amount not to exceed $25 million and zero cents. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Informal resolution number 997-22, establishing the City Commission's intention not to prioritize the enforcement of state laws that criminalize abortion.
I'll need a motion and a second.
I move to adopt informal resolution number 997-22.
I second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so we're probably moving second to approve informal resolution number 997-22. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Board appointments.
Your Honor, I move to appoint Kathleen M. Turner to the Environmental Advisory Board for a term ending November 27, 2025.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to appoint Kathleen M. Turner to the Environmental Advisory Board for a term ending November 27, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Commissioner?
Your Honor, I move to reappoint Matt Sawyer to the City Plan Board for a term ending June 30, 2024.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to reappoint Matt Sawyer to the City Plan Board for a term ending June 30, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
I move to reappoint Rosie Miller, Geraldine Piggies, Greg Scott, and Greg Scott to the City Plan Board for a term ending June 30, 2025.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to reappoint Rosie Miller, Geraldine Piggies, and Greg Scott to the City Plan Board for a term ending June 30, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Cheryl Garrett and Katie Joseph to the Board of Tax Review for a term ending June 30, 2024.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to reappoint Cheryl Garrett and Katie Joseph to the Board of Tax Review for a term ending June 30, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
I abstained.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Got one abstention?
It's noted.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move to appoint David F. Avney II to the Procurement Enhancement Program Oversight Committee for a term ending March 17, 2025.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to appoint David F. Avney II to the Procurement Enhancement Program Oversight Committee for a term ending March 17, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, are there any citizens who are registered to speak?
Yes, Your Honor, I have four citizens who have registered to speak. I would like to state again that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on a green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, I ask everyone to be respectful by refraining from any utterance, gesture, or conversation that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. A call to the podium, Lynn Lamonts.
Your name and address for the record.
Yes, Lynn Lamonts, 1061 Bertram Ave.
You may begin.
Okay, I am here to speak about the North Main Street Corridor area. There were meetings going on and emails that have since to cease, and I'm fine with that. I'm not a meeting attender. I'm all about work ethic, and so I'm here to bring, you know, some work here that needs to be looked at. The first item, I would like to say, there was a pivot team in regards to the police in the North Main Street area. This, again, was not communicated by the Planning Department. I actually researched that information with the police and found out we have new leadership. I'm not certain if there is a pivot team anymore over there. And also, we need, you know, more communication and emails. We used to get information regarding liquor license, zoning, youth nuisance meetings. This, this doesn't go out as frequently as it should. Also, there is a high level of drugs and prostitution still in the area. It seems to have shifted from about angst up to connect, so it's moving away from Five Oaks and Santa Clara, but there is still quite a bit. It is a lot of white people. It is a lot of meth. They are active all the time, awake all the time. But I would like to thank Randy Bean for at least communicating and also following up on things. I also want to send a reminder that there is no hospital in the Northwest Dayton area to give birth. Since Roe was overturned, you can't have a baby at Grandview. You can't have a baby at Miami Valley North. You know, this Band-Aid station where Good Samaritan Hospital, you can't have a baby there. There was a redlining movie on PBS, and it's my hope that the ARPA money considers the redlining and the equity in the neighborhoods regarding demolition in particular. I would like to thank the city for demolition of 15 and 17 Oakley Avenues. I believe 1824 North Main Street is about to come down, so I do thank you for that. There are a lot of fire damaged structures that need to come down first. These are not rehabable. I mean, these structures, there are piles of houses just down from where former Whaley lived. 45, 47 Roe Avenue, 807, 809 Ferndale, 300 Fernwood Avenue, 1618 East Norman Avenue, 72 Ashwood Avenue. These are all houses that are piles of houses that you can't rehab. I mean, even the preservationists would agree. They're just a pile of houses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lamont.
Appreciate it.
Gwen Davis. Gwen Davis. Your name and address for the record, please.
Melissa Bertolo, 1137 Harvard Boulevard.
Okay, good evening.
You may begin.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, and staff. First, I'd like to apologize. It appears that I am speaking off agenda. I did not realize that the resolution we read today, while the resolution number was included on the agenda, I did not see it in the agenda documents. I hope I'm mistaken, but I do want to draw your attention to that as City Commission agendas could be more accessible, and I hope that it's ultimately a reflection of transparency as well. So I'm here to speak on your resolution and, and the overturning of Roe v. Wade, as I have also emailed all of you. Commissioner Joseph, thank you for responding to my email, but I am saddened ultimately that none of you have responded, and not only Mayor and Commissioners Turner Sloss have made public statements until this evening. I am a mother. I have two biological children and also a stepson. And it wasn't until I, until I became a biological mother that I truly understood how vital abortion access is. And I can tell you unequivocally today that if I were to become pregnant again, I would need an abortion. I am someone who has suffered significantly from prenatal and postpartum depression, and I know that there are many reasons that, that people seek an abortion. And I don't share this often, and even those closest to me likely do not know how severely my mental health has suffered. So again, I'm really ultimately saddened by the response from all of you and that your resolution today is a tiny step toward protecting that choice. And I'm sorry, I don't mean all of you. Commissioner Turner Sloss, I greatly appreciate your comments, and Commissioner Mims as well. But it's not just about having choice, it's also about access to that choice. And from what I understand of your resolution tonight, it's not enough. It's about deprioritizing and not decriminalizing. And I want to state this so clearly, and it's something that you all have also recognized tonight, Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Joseph, in your comments this evening about how black and brown women and people of color already understand this. This is something they have already been struggling with, is that access to the choice. And so I wanted to ask you to do more than what you have done this evening. I'd like to ask you to use city resources, the law department, and funding. I'd also like to see you use, follow Cincinnati's footsteps to protect the rights to access for your employees and paying for travel for your employees who may need to travel out of state for healthcare. And ultimately, I'd like to hear that all of you unapologetically state that you are pro-abortion, but I will settle for hearing that you are pro-choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Name and address for the record, please.
Marshall Wowe, 56 Mountain Street, Dayton.
You may begin.
I came to speak about the abortion legislation, but I wanted to make a note about the Ombudsman Office. I think it's a huge mistake to decrease funding, even if you have supplemented it with county funding. As you said, the majority of complainants are City of Dayton residents. As we give more and more power to the county to make decisions about what happens with a service that primarily serves Daytonians, we lose the ability to control and ensure that those services remain. I think it's a mistake, and I think, Commissioner Shaw, your comments are incongruent. Either this is not a responsibility of the city, in which case why are we even wasting $25,000? Or it is, and let's make them whole. I'd like to move on to the abortion topic. I came to share a story, and I have to say I'm a little bit nervous in sharing this story. It's about a police experience I had, and the police officer who threatened me is in the room today, and that's unnerving. I was a bystander for the arrest of two young black men who were stopped pretextually for tags or something, later found to have marijuana, not a lot of marijuana, a little bit of marijuana. They were taken out of their car, put in the back of police cars, and if you review the tape, subsequently trespassed from RTA property indefinitely. You can see the sadness and despair in their eyes as they learned they would no longer have a way to get to work because they had weed. I believe this commission decriminalized weed. And as we look to deprioritize or decriminalize or whatever we're doing around abortion, I'm curious, curious how you plan to hold your city commissioner or your city manager responsible, and her police department, responsible to enforcing the decisions that this commission makes in respect to the way it's going to protect its citizens? If you could respond to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wowe.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I misspoke when I said four. I have one more.
Okay.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jocelyn Reynard, 107 McDaniel Street, Dayton, Ohio 45405.
You may begin.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commission, City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'm here for two things. The first is that I wanted to come in front of you. As you know, I'm the vice president of the Dayton School Board. We did something pretty significant yesterday, and I wanted to come in front of you and share that. Yesterday, we held a special board meeting, and we passed a resolution in opposition to House Bill 99. If you're not familiar, Ohio House Bill 99, passed by the House and passed by the Senate and then signed by Governor Dewine, reduced the number of training hours to, for teachers and staff to carry firearms in schools from 600 hours to only 24 hours. This was an egregious and terrible decision, and so we took the opportunity to pass a resolution, not only in opposition to the bill, but to announce that we are not allowing any teachers or staff, including our security resource officers, to carry any firearms in any of our Dayton Public Schools' property. We will address changing the policy in a future meeting, but we know through consultation with our security chief that one gun in our schools is too many, one too many guns, and it creates an unsafe environment. We do not want to put that burden on our teachers. I'm grateful for the support that you all give Dayton Public Schools. I know that all of you care deeply about the safety of our teachers, our staff, and our students in all of our public schools. I'm really grateful to be a part of making Dayton a little bit safer. And I would also like to add that we did this with full support of all 11 of our bargaining units, because they also recognize the need to have a safe environment in our schools. So every single bargaining unit was in support of the resolution. And the second thing I would like to speak on, taking off my school board member hat and a citizen hat, my mother hat, I would also like to speak in support of the informal resolution. I will echo some of the comments that have made, been made already by Melissa Bertolo and Clerk of Courts Marty Garis. This is a good first step. I very much look forward to seeing how it will be taken further. I'm going to echo Mayor Perval's remarks that he made on Monday. I profoundly, unabashedly, and unequivocally support the right for women to choose their own healthcare decisions. So thank you for passing that, and I look forward to hearing what you will do in the future. And that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Black.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That is all, Your Honor.
That is it? Okay. Ms. Dixting, any closing comments?
I have no closing comments, although I would like to make sure that Ms. Lamonts, if you could make sure that the list of fire damaged structures gets over to Todd Kinsky before you leave today, that would be really helpful for us on the follow-up. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner Turner Sloss, closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor, I have quite a few, so bear with me, please.
Not a surprise.
So first and foremost, I want to thank all of the residents for coming out this evening. I would like to thank in particular Mr. Joseph Abrams for his comments. Thank you very much for your comments this evening. Thank you for always holding us accountable. And again, I really appreciate your comments and your well-thought-out statements that you have made this, this evening. I also like to thank Clerk of Courts Marty Garis. Thank you for your support on the informal resolution. I look forward to working with you. I have a number of ideas that I'll be sharing this evening. So again, you and I partnered together, as well as some other community partners, Towshia Rowntree, the Lawyers Project, and many others, ABLE, the list goes on and on. So again, for the Housing Clinic and the Wreckers Ceiling Clinic that we provided on June 11. So again, I look forward to working with you on the informal resolution and making sure that we can take it a step further. Ms. Lamont, as always, thank you for holding us accountable. Thank you for doing your, your due diligence. You are in fact the blight buster, so keep doing what you do and keep coming here every Wednesday if possible, when your schedule permits, again, to hold us accountable, to make sure that we are in fact providing that decent quality of life that we were all elected here to do. Mr. Wowe, Marshall Wowe, thank you as always. Thank you for coming here this evening and raising your concerns. I would ask that City Manager Ms. Dixting, if you could have a conversation with Mr. Wowe afterwards, I would like to get a little bit more information on the incident that he was speaking of, of the two African-American he was speaking of, of the two African-American young men that were arrested for the possession of marijuana that took place at the RTA hub, if I'm correct in that location. And then also, I would like to, again, thank Ms. Jocelyn Reinhardt. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your leadership, as well as the leadership of the rest of your board members for House Bill ninety-nine and making sure that you all passed the resolution. I am a mother. I have three children that are in fact students in Dayton Public Schools, and so again, I appreciate your leadership on that. In regards to the informal resolution, ninety-nine seven dash two-two, again, I want to echo Commissioner Shaw's leadership. Thank you and his comments as well. Thank you for your leadership in initiating this informal resolution. I think this is in fact a good first step for us to make sure that we're putting our best forward. However, I think we have to do more. As a woman of color, as a mother, we need to do more. And it is my understanding with having a conversation with the Director of the Commission Office, Ms. Hollingsworth, and correct me if I'm wrong, you have been having a conversation, Ms. Dixting, on how we can make sure that we have those best practices adopted in the City of Dayton to protect the City of Dayton employees. So again, I look forward to providing or seeing that update come across our desk. This is in fact a good first step forward, a good gesture, but I want us to look at other ways. We need to really, you know, oftentimes, we say that the state of Ohio, we travel impacts. Let's follow the leadership of the City of Cincinnati. Let's look at ways in how we can support our family planning and women's health in our community. Let's start with our own employees. We should follow the footsteps, again, of other municipalities across the country and not just in the state of Ohio. We need to look at examples in Austin, New York City, Portland, Oregon, in establishing public funds for reproductive rights, abortion care, and other logistics support services. We also need to look at San Francisco and prohibiting the false or misleading advertising by so-called crisis pregnancy centers and not providing abortions or emergency contraceptions or refers for those services. So again, making sure that we have support family planning that is unbiased and that is in fact fact-based. I would also like to say in that regard, so again, I will be sharing these recommendations with my colleagues, as well as with the City Manager and the Director. I also would like to thank, and I do not want to steal your thunder, so I'll be very brief with this, but I want to thank the Mount Vernon Neighborhood residents and all of the City of Dayton staff members who attended and all of the planning, all of the logistics that you put in regards to Tuesday's night, the first mayor's neighborhood conversation and canvassing tour that took place, again, in the Mount Vernon Neighborhood, and a number of my colleagues were there. It's good to see you all. Welcome back, Commissioner. And I also want to uplift and commend the work of Recreation Services. I want to encourage all the residents to participate in a number of fitness classes that are available at all of our recreation facilities this afternoon. Ms. Dixting, I want to thank you for this opportunity as well, and extending this courtesy to the City of Dayton employees for the twenty wellness points, I believe, that they earned for the aquatics class. So that was, it was a lot of fun, and I hope that we can extend those courtesies to more of our city employees. And then I would also like to say, and this is a shameless plug I might add, too, I would also like to uplift the work of our IT Department. I completed my cybersecurity today, and I will say, it was very engaging and informative, and it was not boring at all. So kudos to the IT Department. Thank you very much. And then last but not least, I would like to encourage everyone to have a wonderful and safe holiday weekend. That is all, Your Honor.
Very much. Appreciate it. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yes. Commissioner Shaw, I want to thank you for sharing your stories around your wife's pregnancy and Mrs. Bertolo. Thank you for sharing your stories.
Ms. Bertolo.
Over the years, as a pastor, women have shared stories with me, intimate stories in those sacred moments where they had to make difficult decisions, and I value their trust. And in the midst of this debate, I just encourage people to hear the personal stories of women and men in the midst of it, but more than just listening to the intimate stories, also to listen for women leaders as they raise their voices and provide us a guidance on the wisdom that we need so that we can create a healthy society. One thing that I heard recently from a woman leader was that, in the midst of this abortion debate, one of the things that often gets overlooked is that women do not have full equity in our society. There are disparities between men and women in power, agency, economic stability, and leadership, and part of our work needs to be erasing those disparities so that women have the same power and the same rights within our society. I cannot, as much as I've tried since Friday, imagine what it would mean not to have full control and full rights over my own body. And I say that as a person who's paralyzed and I don't have full control over my body, but to have the state tell me that I don't have full control over my own body, I can't fully comprehend. Matter of fact, if you don't have control over your own body, all the other rights kind of pale, don't they? The first fundamental right is having body autonomy. I believe body autonomy is a human right, a civil right, and it should be linked to a right for healthcare, including reproductive care and including abortions. As being paralyzed, I know that life is fragile. I also know that it's miraculous. If it wasn't for modern medicine, I would not be here today. And I'm also fortunate. Our family has faced difficulty of infertility, and I'm fortunate to be a father by adoption. I share those personal parts because in every one of these decisions, it's incredibly personal, and the complexity there and the calculus of all of those decisions cannot be understood in any way by the state. And to have the state inter meaning in the most intimate decisions around healthcare that should be a right for all is just plain wrong. So I thank my colleagues for, Commissioner Shaw, for introducing this informal resolution. I appreciate your comments and the vote to support it. Commissioner Turner-Sloss, I appreciate your vision of where we can go and people's affirmation that we can take more steps and the encouragement from those who have come. If I can take a breath, I have some other comments, not nearly at that level.
Take your time.
Now I feel like I'm in church. All right, Doc, take your time. Ms. Leman, I want to thank you. I know you do great work over there in the Five, or the, what is it? Gosh, I'm blanking on. Five Oaks. Yeah, no. Five Oaks. Yeah. Sorry. You know, I ride my hand cycle up and down through that neighborhood, and we have a lot of work to do. And I've been encouraged, though, there are signs of people improving homes over there, and so hopefully we can build on that and build on your hard work. So thank you for being so diligent in that neighborhood. I want to echo Commissioner Turner-Sloss's words of affirmation to Board Member Reinhardt. Thank you for the work on HB ninety-nine, and also as a father of a Dayton Public School student, you know, we all want our schools to be safe in the city, and so thank you for working to do that. And also, I want to publicly affirm my conversation with you about working around protecting reproductive rights in our state. And then finally, we have a fun weekend coming up. The Lights and Flight Festival is Sunday, July third, from noon to ten, and the fireworks are from ten to ten-thirty. And Commissioner Shaw, I think you're a kayaker. I am. It says here you can do boom-boom paddle and surf. Nice, nice. You can put in over by the club there on, what is that, the Mad River, and paddle down and watch the fireworks from the river. Nice. And I look forward on Friday to being out with the folks at the dog park and to see that amenity, and I look forward, I think, you know, I think it's a great sight. I ride through Triangle Park. I'm always amazed at how underutilized Triangle Park is, it's such a beautiful setting. I think this is going to bring some new life to it, and I'm looking forward as people get in there to be able to use it and make it come alive, and so I...
I'm sorry. Point of clarification, the Lights and Flight Festival, July third, starts at five p.m.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you for the correction. And is that at Riverside?
I believe we're still in the vicinity of, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And to wish everyone, I don't know what the right term is this year, because it's hard to have a happy Fourth of July, but I encourage people to have a reflective Fourth of July because the ideals of our nation are important, and for folks to stand up for them is important, and it should be an occasion for us to recommit ourselves to those ideals. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner, for those important remarks. You know, I'm a girl dad, proud to be a girl dad as you are, and, you know, my daughter was born almost twenty-one years ago with certain rights over her own body, and suddenly and tragically, she does not have that control right now, so we're going to work to fight that. I agree, we need to do more. We're going to do more, and in fact, we've started the work already in looking into options for cities like ours to push back, and I just know that we're going to continue to do that and strengthen where we can, so I'm looking forward to the future. Anyway, I do want to thank the police department. You know, they hear all of the complaints, and I mean, sometimes it's justified, we got that. They're doing something really good now, the summer camp that's going on with kids that have been victims of abuse and other kinds of tragedies in their lives, spending time with them over these next several weeks. I think it's outstanding. When I saw that come across my desk, I just said, well, we've got to talk about that more, because they're doing some really fantastic things. They were out at your porch tour last night and just interacting with the citizens and having conversations. This is what we need to be doing. This is what police departments need to be doing, and we're doing that here in Dayton, and I want to thank them publicly for that and all their work that they do behind the scenes that most folks don't ever hear about. So I want to congratulate you all and applaud you for that work, and that's all I have today.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First, I want to thank the Mayor and further let the cat out of the bag about your Mount Vernon Neighborhood meeting last night. Thank you for inviting us and including us. It was really nice to listen to the neighbors. You know, you can hear sort of twin themes. There's the theme of frustration with a lot of things. There's a theme that the rebirth is happening, and they can see it. So you can see them side by side, and I appreciate your inviting and convening that group. Second, I want to thank the City Manager for her continued work with Mrs. DePaul. The item that was up today in managers' items to help with the Emergency Solutions Grant is part of the plan that we put together years and years ago to help end chronic homelessness, which has been successful, even through some tough years. So I want to thank you, Ms. Dixting and the staff, for sticking with this. There's still work to do, and there will forever be work to do, but we're making a good day, and so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you so much. As we mentioned again about the event yesterday, Mount Vernon Neighborhood, and I would like to thank all those who participated and staff who played a major role in making sure that everything was taken care of, and also those citizens who made the time to come out and share with us everything that was on their mind. And so we look forward to our next six events as well, and hope you would do the same. Additionally, spent some time yesterday as well, I believe it was yesterday, these days are running so closely together, at Wilberforce University with the President of Wilberforce University, Dr. Pinkert, and the President of Ohio State University, Dr. Johnson, as they signed the MOU to do a joint program for increasing the preparation for golf professionals not only field of golf in terms of playing, but for those who design golf courses, those who manage golf courses, and those who help plant the grass in that place. While that sounds maybe minor for those who may not be involved in that, that's a very major and lucrative business, and so the aspect of them having a joint news conference yesterday at Wilberforce with a busload of those from Ohio State University coming down to help support that initiative as well, and I was very happy to be there. Additionally, a shout-out to DPS, because four of the young men who are on the golf team at Wilberforce are from Dunbar High School, and they were identified and coached by Mr. Will Ware, who is a bank executive with the PNC Bank and who also serves, as you said, as the golf coach at Wilberforce. And so he's made sure that those young men have not only the scholarships, but also that they have summer jobs working at golf courses across this area, and he has room for more, so he is looking for more and more young people to be involved in that process. Additionally, as we mentioned, schools, clearly, the position that the board took on House Bill ninety-nine makes all the sense in the world, and we really appreciate that. We need no more weapons in this community, and it puts an undue burden on not just our police, who are trying to manage that, but for every citizen that gets into any type of debate with someone else and wondering whether or not the person that you're having that debate with has a weapon, and it may be antagonized some way, shape, or form, and then use that because they may not have the tools to resolve their conflicts at its lowest level before it becomes anger and rage and then violence. So again, I pray for this community, and I pray for those who are on the front line who are addressing that particular issue as well. And then lastly, I won't tell you how many years ago, but I recall being in high school and being on debating about abortion, and I was on the team that won, that talked about the, yeah.
Of course.
Those without saying. We talked seriously about the unhealthy attempts for amateurs to do abortions and the unsafe set of circumstances associated with that. My decision was right then, and my decision is right now, that unless you're the doctor, the father, or the mother, you have no business involving that decision. And so I ask you again to look at where those decisions are being decided upon, and they're generally at a state, not federal, level. And as we try to work out things that we can do to try to make some sense in our local communities for these egregious type of decisions that are made, be patient with us as we try to find more and more ways to protect our citizens and more and more ways to put pressure on those who are making, again, some of these decisions. So with no further business to come before...
Your Honor.
Excuse me.
I just have one comment, and I'm actually going to defer to the City Manager.
With no further business to come for the City Commission?
Okay.
Please adjourn.